All right, I'll call the meeting to order at 12:30. Everyone is present. We have our finance director here who has joined us to lend her expertise. And the members of the committee, Tom O'Connor, Michael Kane, Jim Brodrick, and myself. Unfortunately, Mr. Manley wasn't able to make it because he had other commitments today. I want to discuss the charge that the -- not discuss it, but advise you of the charge that the president of the town council gave me, and she said that the initial look and reaction to department submissions lies with your committee. Going forward, your charge is to consider the combined capital request and the manager's proposed budget and to recommend a suggested game plan that the council can discuss, discuss, and take to a public hearing. So that's what we are charged with today. So I will ask you, I have a list of questions for you, Sarah.
I did bring, which I thought might be helpful, a copy from a page of the charter talking about the budget process and where we are in it.
Okay.
Then we can make sure that we're all on the same page as to what our deadlines are and whatnot. So the first step was that the president of the town council shall call a joint meeting, the town council and the school committee, prior to commencement of the budget to review the financial condition of the town. We have done that step. Step number two, the town manager and the town council shall meet to discuss the town council's priorities for the upcoming fiscal year and discuss the budget format. The town manager will provide the town council and school committee a copy of the draft budget by April 1st. So that step has happened. Step number three, the town manager shall meet with the superintendent of schools to discuss the upcoming fiscal year budget prior to submitting a proposed operating budget. That step has also occurred. So now we are at the, by May 1st, step four, by May 1st, the town manager will submit a proposed operating budget for all town agencies to the town council, which shall include the school budget as adopted by the school committee for the ensuing fiscal year with accompanying budget message and support documentation. The budget message submitted by the town manager shall explain the budget in fiscal terms and in terms of work programs for all town agencies. It shall outline the proposed fiscal priorities of the town for the ensuing fiscal year, describe important features of the proposed budget, and indicate any major variations from the current budget, fiscal policies, expenditures, and revenues, together with reasons for such changes. Proposed budget shall provide a complete fiscal plan of all town funds and activities and shall be in the form the town manager deems desirable. Then step five is the town council shall adopt the budget with or without amendments by June 1st. So right now, we are, prior to that, May 1st, with the town manager submitting the financial budget.
Okay, very good.
Could I just ask a question about the charge?
Yes, ma'am.
Because this portion keeps referring to the town manager shall propose, submit, blah, blah. And so I'm just curious about the function of the financial oversight committee. Is this to respond to what the manager may submit or propose, or I'm just a little bit unclear.
Well, my opinion, in my opinion only, is that we have received a budget that has not been fully addressed by the town manager at this point in time. No adjustments have been made, no deletions, no additions. And so we are to simply advise the council of what we see, particularly you and I, we are the citizen representatives on this. We have council members who are aware of the budget, and I'm sure they have their own reactions, but they have to act as a team on the council. So it's just to, our role, I think, is not to formulate a budget, but to highlight areas that perhaps are excessive, or ask questions that may not occur to the council. Does that sound sufficient?
Yeah, that's pretty similar.
I would agree with that. I mean, it's been a little bit of a moving target, even with the implication of the paperwork that the school committee submitted to us over the weekend, so until everything's that type, everything needs to be digested before we can present anything.
Exactly. So with that, I have several questions, but I'll open it up to the committee members if they have specific questions of Sarah having looked at the budget. Or do you want me to go ahead and ask my questions?
I think it would be good if you started.
Minor, strictly to do with funds available, not strictly, but could you tell us what the current balance is for free cash?
Yeah. If you give me a moment, my computer will start up.
Sure.
Make the next question.
Well, that all has to do with things you would have to remove. What is the amount in the stabilization fund?
Uh, hold on a moment.
We'll wait for it to boot up. Do you know, will there be any snow and ice deficit this year?
Yes.
There will be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, however, the snow and ice deficit should be, be able to be funded from any surpluses in departments, and we hopefully should not have to increase the tax rate due to that.
Okay.
We have not had to do that since well before I came here. I don't even know if ever, but I know well before I was here.
Yeah. Department of Defense, okay. And the other question I have, is there still, according to the State Department of Education, is there still a requirement called the school foundation amount?
What do you mean?
Which stipulated how much a community had to contribute to education.
I don't know the answer to that one. That's a better question for the school.
Okay, okay. I've always assumed that East Long Meadow has funded way beyond that amount, but I thought it'd be worth knowing.
I do know that there is a requirement for the library for the town to spend a certain amount in order to be eligible for the state grants, which is what a lot of the library increases due to.
Yeah.
But I'm not aware of whether the school has the similar kind of requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And my other financial question is, what is the status of our OPEB liability?
The actuary is currently doing a review on our actuarial liability, and I should have, I'm hoping to have an updated number within a month or so. I'm hoping even less, but I don't know for sure, certain, but I can give you what the last one was. So keeping in mind that this number does not take into account anything that has been funded last year.
Yeah. Oh, it doesn't?
No.
Okay.
If you want to know how much our actuarial liability is for OPEB, if you want to know how much is in the OPEB trust, I can tell you that.
I would like to know both of those.
Sure, no problem.
I just wondered if there was a general philosophy at the end of the fiscal year to transfer anything from free cash to the OPEB?
Yes.
So that's what I was concerned about.
Yes.
I think that's a good idea, but...
Yes, and that is my plan as well, just like I have the past couple of years, that I will go before the town council and gets a bit closer to say, okay, we didn't wind up needing all of the free cash for other purposes, so let's leave this amount in free cash and then the rest to transfer to OPEB.
Okay.
But I don't know yet, it's still too early, just in case something else goes wrong.
Right.
I usually look at that at the beginning of June.
Okay.
Okay.
That's after the budget process, though?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
So at that point, we wouldn't know what we would like to transfer into OPEB to reduce our gaining and increasing liability.
Right, and it also depends if the council sees a need to use any free cash amounts in balancing the budget.
Yeah.
That's the other part of that scenario. We hope they don't, but...
Well, the OPEB is one of our biggest expenses, and it's ongoing, and it continues to increase.
For people who are watching and don't know what OPEB is, it's other post-employment benefits, which is basically the retirements and benefits for our retired employees, correct?
No, it's the health insurance benefits.
The health insurance.
For retirees and their spouses.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So if they've met the certain vesting periods that they worked here for, the certain amount of time based on when they were hired, then when they leave the town, we provide their health insurance benefits for them and their spouse until they die.
What percentage does the town pay?
We are required to, so depends how old they are. So if they, if they retire, and let's say that they retire at, I don't know, they retire early at 60.
Prior to Medicare.
Prior to Medicare, then the town's percentage is 70/30, just like an employee would be.
Okay.
But once the Medicare, then it's 50/50, and the state requirement is a minimum of So if an employee, let's say, left here, retired, whatnot, was on the health insurance, then came off for whatever reasons, and then wanted to come back on, they wouldn't be able to do that.
Ah.
It's a one-time.
Yeah.
You can't jump on and off as you please.
Sign on when you retire or leave service, and yeah.
Yeah, unless something very, very extenuating happened, which then they would have to petition and...
Yeah. Okay, how's that computer doing?
Oh, it's finally decided to wake up.
Chris, with regards to that conversation, so what have we given in the past for OPEB? I think we've transferred $100,000 or something like that on a regular basis?
Yeah.
So we can assume, make a basic assumption, we're going to look to do the same thing?
Yes, and that's what was in the proposed, that was submitted on the budget.
That's in the budget.
Right, so we're not looking at being able to increase that in any way or decrease it.
No, no.
So $100,000 is going to be pretty much what is going to be, well, was recommended.
That's a standard, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and that's similar to what the appropriations committee had recommended when they were in place. It's the same, same kind of concept.
The idea that sum was better than money.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's why, whenever possible, if I can with the free cash, I like to try to supplement to that and increase it, because our liability grows between 3 and 4 million a year. So $100,000 doesn't really...
No.
Right, but just for our viewing audience now, too. I mean, that's, we're not unique in that way.
No, we are not.
Most cities and towns are in the same boat in the state.
Yeah, on public liabilities.
Yep, I believe that there are only two that are fully funded.
In the state, the 351?
Yes.
Right.
I would just ask a question. Is that $100,000 correlated basically on the amount, the number of employees that we would have? Is that taken into consideration? Would it have anything to do with population?
No.
No, it was just a number that was, sounded better than money.
An arbitrary number, okay. But that number...
It shows the state we have an intent of catching up, and that satisfies them for the time.
The reason I ask is because, I mean, that has to be a moving target based on...
It is, yes, absolutely. And it keeps growing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to keep growing away from us.
We want to make sure it's sustainable.
I believe originally it was a slightly smaller amount, maybe 50,000 or 75,000 the first year.
50,000, I think, was our first year.
And then, and that was before I started, was that one. And then after that, since I've been here, I think we're somewhere around the, just over 5 million in there since I've been here.
Were you able to bring up the balances yet for those two funds?
Yep, it's loading right now.
Okay, good.
Sorry. If I had known those questions, I would have already had them all already with me.
I should have emailed them to you.
Yes. The stabilization has 2,735,734.
734?
Yes.
Okay, and the free cash?
Free cash will do last, because I have to actually subtract.
Okay.
But you asked, the OPEB trust has 5,767,521.
And I commend you for being able to get it up to that.
Thank you.
I do, too.
Thank you. Actually, we were on the bonding call this past fall for Moody's, and they were surprised at how much that we've been able to put away for that.
Yeah.
And actually stated that we should be an example for other communities at planning for this, so...
And that's also in the fund where we're collecting some sort of investment percentage on that, right?
Yes, it's an OPEB trust in accordance with Mass. General laws, so it earns interest, it can be invested. There are specific rules about how to take the money out when it is time, but yes, it's being proven.
So that's helping us along the way, too?
Correct.
The more we put in, the higher the balance, the better percentages we get.
Exactly, exactly. And now that we're finally over that for, so we're finishing up the actuarial valuation, which will cover us for the period, for the audit that we just had. And so for the next one, when I go out to do my RFP for that, I am asking for assistance as to projections on how, if we were to keep giving at this rate, how soon until we can start making deductions from it, if we were, how to change all that, but that will be in the next RFP.
Okay.
So I couldn't change what was already in there, so. And that, we should be able to do this, this summer, to be able to do the RFP for that.
Ah.
So fortunately, it's after this budget period, but...
Yeah.
Chris, do you mind if I jump in, because some of your questions are similar to my questions?
Oh, okay.
And while we're on those subjects, I don't want to lose track and have Sarah have to jump back and forth.
Sure.
But just a little while ago, we were talking about the snow and ice deficit.
Yes.
My question would be slightly opposite that. There are many departments which are going to have a surplus. Are we looking to turn that money back in, and do we know what that number is?
So I don't know if many is the right term, but no, we don't know at this point. It's still just the beginning of April. There are still three months left of the fiscal year, so I don't know right there. I do have an idea that there is going to be some surplus in utilities, just because we had a really good year. You know, it wasn't an extreme drought, there wasn't a ton, you know, a ton of snow, so heating and air conditioning costs, therefore, were down for both of those. The cost of those utilities also did not skyrocket or anything, so I think we're doing pretty good there, and we did do well with the solar credits again this year. So based on that, I, looking at it right now compared to prior years, I think that we're in a good spot to be able to offset the snow and ice with the utilities. As far as other departments, I don't know if any of, if any or which ones would have any extra. Now, if there is any surplus, part of how we close out the year is for it to all go into the general fund, which is what then becomes part of your free cash.
Exactly.
Right. Well, I have to, well, let me mention two specific, then, HR department, since we haven't had one since September and was fully funded.
Mm-hmm.
What's going to happen to those funds?
Right, we should have some extra there. I don't know how much at this point, but yes, we should have some there.
Okay, and the other one was, it was briefly mentioned by Bruce and then DPW that, with the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, the creation of, and the funds being collected, there was a $25,000 offset from the Highway Department because of the work that was currently being done as part of the Stormwater, which will now move to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. So are there, I thought the Sewer Department also was doing some work with the Stormwater? So is there some monies to be saved there?
No, there is no monies to be saved there. The storm, the sewer had to pay for the extra expense for the asset management plan. The Stormwater that was in the Highway with that $25,000, you can see that in the budget, and that's why the non-salary in there went down to $25,000.
Yeah, I saw that there, but knowing how the process works, there were other departments which will be offset, which will now be covered by the Stormwater, which were doing that work in the past, so...
Right, but the...
Where's the savings?
There isn't on those. So what happened with the, so what happened with Highway before, it was covering just the basic Stormwater kinds of things. With the new mandates, the fiscal '19 budget was specifically increased to cover those Stormwater costs. The other departments, such as Water and Sewer, were not increased to cover any Stormwater. Then the asset management plan requirements came out, we had to pay for that, it was split between the three departments, so actually, one of those enterprise funds, I can't remember which one, one of them most likely will need a free cash from its own free cash transfer to cover actually paying that bill. And Highway was able to use the amount that had been put in there extra, and they reduced some of their other costs to cover this kind of a thing.
And that should be an ongoing savings and not an additional expense from those departments.
Well, it's a one-time expense.
For that piece of it, but what about the maintenance into the system, since they've been doing this work all along?
But a lot of the Stormwater requirements are brand-new requirements that weren't done before.
Exactly.
I understand that some of them are new, but not all of them.
Right.
We've been doing a lot of the maintenance work and a lot of the repair work, and we're been doing inflow and infiltration on an ongoing basis, and that's all part of the Stormwater savings.
Right.
Or costs that we're now going to have. So there should be a savings on the other side.
Right.
To here, I'm not pointing them at you, I'm asking the questions, because in my opinion, there should be some sort of offset.
Right, and there is in your capital. So if you look at the capital, that several years, that there's been an inflow and infiltration capital project. So a bunch of the inflow was paid through those capital funds.
There was $100,000 we set aside every year, and I know that, yeah.
Yep, so that will be where a lot of that offset is, is that therefore, then the enterprise fund would be the one paying for that instead of the operating budget out of there.
But it's in this year's capital, again, another $100,000.
Right, because the Stormwater hasn't started until July 1st, you can't fund it from funds you don't have yet. We're not, the town is not starting the Stormwater Enterprise Fund with any funds to begin with.
Right.
So you can only appropriate, the budget that was created for it does not include having that at this point.
So we're going to be paying for that out of the capital, the $100,000?
If the town council approves that, yeah.
In addition to the Stormwater funds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, in order to, my understanding with the DPW director, which, you know, by all means, please meet with the DPW director for more questions, but my understanding is that based on all the requirements that need to be done, that this is the best plan to move forward.
Okay. How are we doing on that free cash amount?
Oh, sorry, I have the OPEB, the current actuarial liability.
Okay.
The unfunded actuarial liability is $62,864,702 as of June 30th, 2017.
Okay.
And the total actuarial liability, so that's the unfunded, the total is 63,964,702.
Say that again, Sarah, 63? That's enough to scare anyone.
And then the annual required contribution, or recommended contribution, over a 30-year amortization would be $5,986,505, which obviously our budget cannot afford that every year.
Exactly. That's very optimistic. Thank you, Sarah.
Sarah, I'm sort of, I was kind of surprised that the total is 63 and the unfunded is 62, even though we have a balance in of 5 million something.
Right, but this is as of June 30, 17.
All right.
So before we made those additional...
Made the big one.
Two years.
Yep. So with the new one, it will have all of those contributions, and we should see that unfunded go down more than just dollar for dollar, because then it can project with growth over that period of time. But under 5 million, they had said you won't see much of a difference, because it's not a sizable enough balance to create a significant move in something like this.
Right.
Sad statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, 5 million's not enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our annual OPEB cost is about 5.6 million a year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes. So free cash, I can look up, are there other questions? Because then you could start discussing those things while I do my talk of free cash.
Yes. I was going to ask you, I know that health insurance and TRASH are two of the budget busters.
Yes.
What else would you add to that?
Sorry, I have to think about it.
TRASH is a budget buster because it's a new contract?
It is not a new contract yet. Next year will be the new contract, but yes.
For 20?
Mm-hmm.
So you're projecting that?
But it is, it's a sizable contract to begin with. They have done a lot of work with the tonnage to reduce the cost, which is great, but it's still, no matter what, it's very expensive.
Yeah, it's a 7% increase this year, and health insurance is...
Is it 7.5%?
7.5%.
Yep.
And those are uncontrolled.
Right, the projected increase for the health insurance was originally in the double digits, because we belong to the Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust. The Health Trust Board, which I am a member of, we voted to use some of our undesigned to offset that increase. So this is a reduced increase, the same thing as last year, yeah.
Really?
Past couple of years, we've used our beginning, our balance to offset it. We do encourage everyone out there to please take advantage of all the health options that we have. There are diabetes clinics and things of that nature, prescription medication that you can get mailed to you, telehealth options to do, like teledoc. And all of those things are fantastic programs for our employees, but they also create a savings for us. So buying the medication that gets sent to you for the mail, that is cheaper for the town's portion to pay than it is if they were to go to just their pharmacy next door and buy a one-month supply instead of a three-month supply. If they use a teledoc to find out what they should do, rather than just going to emergency room, and emergency room co-pay is very expensive, but doing a teledoc or an urgent care or their primary, those all have different rates. So those things also help overall with our premium, as well as then provide great benefits for our employees.
Yeah.
We even have different benefits for gym memberships and things like that, that then they can get money back.
Good.
And all of those help keep that and enable us, us as in the trust, to have money to offset those costs.
And try to keep the cost down.
So I do encourage anybody to take advantage of all of those, and if you're not sure what we offer, then to see the benefits manager in the HR department.
Okay.
Sorry, my little...
No, it's good.
Those are the two biggest things, I believe. There's also just, the insurance in general are over everything, just keeps going up, and a lot of that is based on your claims history.
Yeah.
So some of the expense in those premiums is due to claims that are coming as a result of the former form of government.
Yeah.
That now we're finally settling, so we're having to therefore make those payouts, and those things are impacting our claims.
Like the liability insurance.
So for instance, our general liability insurance, our public officials insurance, all of those kinds of things, our workers' comp, all of that.
Yeah.
So what we should see in the next couple of years, it going the other way, because we've actually had a decrease in incidences, but we're still paying for the past.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody?
It does.
Okay.
Going to let her do her math.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody staring at me, I'm like...
If any question occurs to anyone other than myself, please...
I've got a couple.
Sure.
When we get around, I figure I'll wait my turn.
I don't know if, I'll ask the committee members, have any of you perused and marked off anything in the budget for further deliberations after Sarah can get back to work, that you have, I went through and made red Xs on certain things, so... That you have, I went through and made red Xs on certain things, so, uh, you know, I encourage you to do that, um...
Yes, I mean, going through in in general and mainly from the original packet that, you know, the sources and uses and
Yeah.
the abbreviated, uh, budgets of salary and non-salary.
Yeah.
But I have more of a, probably a question on the totals first and then a little question on the salary increases and how they're reflected.
Yes, that, that's one of mine too. Probably all of us.
Unless they're completely tied with contractual obligations, I guess, right?
Yeah. The one thing I always remember from my many years municipal service, uh, contractual, uh, obligations are subject to appropriation. So, they're not, they're not an absolute, they, uh, they can be adjusted if needs be. I don't encourage it, but... Or negoti- renegotiated.
Correct, you only want the free cash for the operating budget, you don't want the free cash for water or sewer?
No.
Just operating?
Those are contained within the enterprise funds and, uh, those seem to be pretty well managed by yourself.
Myself and the department has.
Well, there is, uh, relative to that discussion to the revolving funds, uh, there's a a requirement that we receive, uh, the revolving funds, the monies in, the monies out report, uh, and I'd like to see that as sooner than later.
Okay, um, I went to give it the other night at the council meeting, um, and I was told we would do it another time, so that's why I didn't hand it out.
Okay.
Um, so, that's fine, so what exactly do you want?
Well, similar to last year, we had a discussion with revolving funds, I mean, this is a a very difficult year, I mean, with with the, with the, I'll call it a the the hot ball we got thrown over the weekend with with the school committee, two million dollars, uh, they're looking for for, uh, the Meadowbrook School roof replacement. On top of us increasing the budget right now by four million, that's six million dollars. I I don't see how we s- we can sustain six million dollar increase in our town budget. And there's going to have to be some real creative ways to reduce some of the cost to offset some of these, you know, requirements and some are just requests. So, uh, I'm looking anywhere we can to bring in funds. And last year, we had a discussion with regard to revolving funds where revolving funds ha- have a have a cap. There's a limit to what they can spend and there were balances over those caps. So, if that if that means we can bring in a hundred thousand dollars to help pay for a capital project or offset some of these costs, then my recommendation would be, let's see what we can do with that, because as you as you're aware, the DOR has said that the council can move monies from any fund that they want.
Well...
Yes, they can.
For the revolving, yes.
For the revolving fund.
Not any fund.
Right, yeah, from the revolving, we're discussing. So, with that said, we can, if there's o- overfunding in some of these accounts, let's move the monies instead of letting it sit there.
Well, I...
I know we collect interest on it, but...
I do encourage the council to hear from the departments who have those because they do have, they do have plans for how that they want to spend those funds and they weren't given that opportunity to discuss that when they were called up at the town council meeting.
But they can't spend those funds unless the limits are increased.
Right, but if they're saving for a particular purpose, the council should be aware of that purpose before they make the decision to take the funds out of there.
I would agree.
And maybe the council should still anyway, but I just think that you should have an understanding as to what that department is planning. Do they have a plan and if so, what is it, just before making that assumption?
I don't disagree with that, but, uh, with regards to that as well, the school currently, and this is something that's always been a a little, you know, you know, in that in that in my ear, is that the town pays to maintain the the schools and the schools collect the funds for the use of the fields. Where's that money accounted for and the DPW is is the one maintaining the fields?
No, that is incorrect. The the school use is to cover the janitorial staff and the janitorial supplies used. Most of it is to pay for actually when it's, uh, when the gyms are used, so basketball or cheerleading has some things or or that kind of stuff. So, the entire amount actually goes to pay custodial overtime rather than that hitting the department. And actually, um, it's, we have been looking at it to make sure that it's enough. Uh, the past two or three years, um, the school has actually had to eat a little bit of the cost because the school use was not enough to cover that. It does not pay for the field maintenance.
Who pays for that, then? We do.
Who?
The town.
Yes, yes.
But they collect the funds, who pays for the police presence? The town. The school doesn't pay for that, so they only pay the custodial piece of it and we bear the burden on the rest of it. You probably haven't seen this email that went, that came out from Joe Ford, where he met with the schools and he met with this group of individuals and and there was a substantial amount of money, uh, that is being collected by the schools and my question would be the same as Joe's, is like, what's going on with that?
I was not invited to any of those.
Why are we paying for services and not being reimbursed if there's monies being collected for it?
I was not invited to any of those meetings, so I don't know what was discussed and what wasn't. I was asked earlier today to be part of a meeting on Thursday of this week, so maybe I will find out more information then.
Yeah, just a question for you, that keep in mind, you know, that, we're trying to do what's fair and just here and and make sure that, you know, if we're expending monies for a certain service, we're getting paid back if someone else has benefited from it. And and that leads me to my next question.
Right, but the, but the school use, so, I'm sorry, you're throwing a lot out. The school use fee of the twenty-five thousand, I I want to clarify, that is not paid by the tax dollars. That is being paid by the participants in the program in recreation. So, and that's to cover the custodial staffing at the school. Now, concerning the maintenance of the fields or maintenance of the facilities, yes, that is a town function, the town pays for all that. So, I don't really understand then what the question or issue with that is.
Where where's the, uh, accounting, the balancing of those funds to show that that twenty-five thousand was spent for the custodial and not used for other purposes within the school system?
Do you want me to print it out and bring it the next time? They have it as a separate department in the school and then you can see that and and it gets offset by those funds.
If if that's the case, yeah. Uh, in addition to that, I mean, uh, uh, what I'm looking for is a ways to recoup any monies to the, back to the town that can help offset some of these huge expenses. And and obviously, you know, uh, you know, twenty-five, fifty thousand here and there could make a difference in in a small way.
Yeah, should get back to your own town, yeah.
But the other piece of that, uh, Chris, is, uh, the charges that we pay, I mean, we're looking, uh, the rec- rec. department has separate fees for in-towners and out-of-towners, but that fee is only like, I think, five dollars difference, Sarah?
I don't recall.
Yeah, so, it's like, if if we're providing services that are costing our towns, pay the towns taxpayers money, then why aren't we charging enough to cover that cost from out-of-towners who are using our facilities, our pine oil, our pool, our our fields?
Yeah, but that's outside our scope right now.
No, but it's but it's part of the the monies to recoup.
Yeah, true.
Right, but it's also all part of the revolving account, which doesn't impact the operating budget.
Yeah.
Is that where it sits?
Yes, that's all in the recreation revolving account, which is, does not impact the operating budget um, and is also one, um, that did have budgets that that were shared but does not require a town council approval for their budget for the year because it falls under a different section of master in law.
Okay, get back to work on that free cash.
Well, I have all my numbers now, I can just do math. Can you, when was the last time you sent a...
What are you trying to find?
Vote to the council.
I haven't sent the last one yet.
Okay.
I think I have it though.
If you do, that would be really helpful, because I believe there's one more number on there that I need.
There's that little one thirty-six somewhere.
Yeah, okay, it was one thirty-six, I just wanted...
Is that the little one?
Yep, that's the one I was meaning, yep, so that's all I needed. Okay, two, seven, three, eight, zero, two, one, and thirty-six cents.
What was that?
Two, seven, three, eight, zero, two, one, and thirty-six cents.
So, that's the current.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Now, Jim, you have a question, or two.
Yeah, uh, kind of very simplistic, so I'll apologize in advance if I, if it's too simple. But I just wanted to make sure I understood what I'm looking at in terms of, uh, uh, general fund sources and the proposed budget uses.
What page are you on, Jim?
Uh, I'm looking at, it's kind of summarized on page thirteen, um, where it's the general fund sources and uses summary.
Sources and uses summary.
Right. And I just want to make sure I I understand what what it's telling me. So, I'm looking at an FY twenty-twenty projected revenue of sixty-three four ninety-six.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, which is a three and a half percent increase over our prior budget. Um, and then I'm looking down here, total general fund uses, which includes the other uses in our capital budget, et cetera, of sixty-three oh two oh, seven, seven, five. So, it's a larger increase, uh, versus two thousand nineteen, but it is also less than our projected revenue.
Correct.
So, is this telling me that based on what our projected revenue is, that revenue is sufficient to cover what the budget has been proposed to be?
Correct.
Right.
Yes, if this were a business and a for-profit, the remaining four seventy-six, one sixty-eight would be your profit.
Right, and so, there really the issue would be, is there any ways to reduce the expenses so that less would have to be charged of the public, but other than that, I mean, I I'm so unused to seeing a a budget, a a first-cut budget with a surplus that I I just had to ask.
Yep. Yep.
All right. Uh, so that was my first question, so our our, uh, framing that, uh, I mean, it's suggesting that everything that everybody has proposed, before we even slim it down, the projected revenue would cover all of that.
Correct.
So, now, it's, would it be more a matter of what do we think really isn't, shouldn't be included in the proposed budgets and and paring that down, but not in the same token of we can't, uh...
Afford it.
It's in minimizing the taxpayers' increase in their tax rate, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I I followed that.
In keeping mind, as we said earlier, this was the budgets that all the departments submitted. This is before any reductions that myself or Denise were making and that we are, we have a list already of of areas that we want to, that we we think we could make cut or...
You would consider might be.
Right, or is not the highest priority, but this does not include any of those cuts. This is everything because we were requested, um, from the council that last year that we didn't show everything, so they wanted to see everything. So, that's why it shows that, not what the...
I would have suspected you would you would have some value judgments of that.
Correct, yeah.
My my other question is more a a reflection of how things show uh, and I I respect and understand trying to use the mechanism of a reserve fund versus budgeting for increases. You know, when we were, had the appropriations committee, we kind of went through those machinations and tried, uh, probably both different ways and and none of them really, you know, worked entirely, but the 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 problem I have visually in looking at those the salary budgets for the departments is, uh, it it basically is showing a two-year increase and reflecting it as a one-year increase against it. Where it, because you're not, it was budgeted, it was spent, but it was sitting in a reserve fund and not in the department's operating budget. So, I I'm wondering, is there a way to, uh, just on either a spreadsheet or whatever, show the effective increase, uh, that, you know, where where you have the reserve fund, kind of using the reserve fund to just show what what effectively that increase was versus, you know, because you're looking at like fifteen percent and and just weird, weird percentages. It would be nice to be able to, um, uh, a- average it so that you you have a more reasonable-looking, uh, number. But then that's, it's more just...
Sorry, I'm trying to think through how to be able to do that.
And I suppose it's whatever you allocate it to each area for that, uh, from that reserve fund is one one possible approach. But it's more just to, it it doesn't change anything, but it...
Right.
Because it's a better picture of...
Yeah, the thing is...
And the and the money was budgeted and that's, you know, and and that's the only part that I'm I'm kind of stumbling over because it was budgeted, so it was in that base of two thousand nineteen somewhere, it's just not in in those operating budgets.
So, you want to see the step up from the two thousand nineteen?
Well, it would be nice to see the effective salary in percentage increases, you know, that had the reserve fund parts included so that you could, you know, you could see it, because I mean, it would it would cut all those things.
Right, well, that's it, it confounded me a little bit too, because in some departments, we've got thirty-six point six.
Right, right, some of it is new people.
Others are sixteen points...
But other than that, there's there's definitely two years worth of stuff going on.
I'll see what I can come up with and and, um, send that, um, and provide that.
Those are my first, uh, those were my initial questions.
That was a good one, that was very good.
Very good question.
The two together, that was it?
Uh, for now, I think, hearing Sarah, uh, I mean, I I hope that we'll have before the twenty-third an opportunity to see what you all had for your thoughts on, you know, what what parts of the proposed budgets made sense to you and what what didn't make sense to you. And I I would find that valuable, I don't know, you know, how you got, how you all feel about that.
We need some real creative ideas this year.
Yeah.
I mean, I I mean, six million dollars, it, I mean, where are we going to come up with six million dollars?
That was one last question, because I I did, I I did participate on the capital
Yes.
budget, uh, group. And I know there's discussions about Ruth, but I, Ru- Ruth, but I, the one that was showing was Maple Shade, not...
Not Meadowbrook?
Meadowbrook.
Meadowbrook was the one that was brought last year, um, it had gone before the town council to put in the statement of interest. The town council had approved it, um, it went before the town council again to do the design fees, the council approved it. So, it's one that I mentioned actually at the capital saying it's not on the list, but it is one in that we would project to bond for it. Um, so, it wasn't put on that final list because it's actually a project that has to be approved in this fiscal year, not in fiscal twenty.
So, it'd have to be approved and bonded in FY nineteen.
Correct.
But in in summary for that, the way that the information that was given to us shows, it's about a little over three million dollars and the state's only going to fund one million, so we need to...
One point three, yeah.
One point three.
Yeah, so we need to come up with...
So, we have one point nine.
We need to, we need to authorize that, yes. And when we did the, um, windows and doors project with them, uh, with them being MSBA, um, their project estimate was significantly higher than what the quotes came back as. So, um, most likely, the same thing's going to happen here. We've talked to other communities who have participated in many MSBA projects and they all said that the MSBA, um, project cost is is always higher than what we wind up getting for the quotes.
Yeah.
Um, if the council does approve it on the twenty-third, um, then the, we could put that RFP out by the end of the month and therefore then have all those bids in and, um, and then have a better idea as to how much it actually costs all before the budget process is totally finalized. Um, but then another benefit to doing it earlier rather than later is that by doing it that early, they could start work immediately when school closes and do the work during the summer and be able to complete it before school opens. So, the school would not be, children would not be impacted by construction like that going on. So, that was why then the push of, hey, we, they just got approval last week, at the end of last week, the MSBA said, yes, you have your project and here's what it is, um, and then that's why it's a quick, um, turnaround.
But it makes a huge difference to us with the amount of monies that we would have to appropriate.
And bonding, it would go into the debt service.
So, the, so the increase in the town's expense, the general fund expense would be for the debt and interest, the increased debt and interest.
Right.
Uh, and that would affect the FY twenty.
Correct, absolutely.
Would you be able to do a projection of what that would be?
Uh, I I...
Because that'll take away from our four hundred thousand.
Well, I did some, I looked back on previous capital, and the DPW was projecting a one point eight million dollar cost to repair that roof. And we're now up to almost three point two by the state's projection.
Well, I think that's what Sarah's saying.
What Sarah was referring to is that they're projecting pretty high. I mean, but that's, that's, that's a dollar twenty-five per thousand on a tax increase.
Now, I.
I mean, that's, that's a little, that's not an average, that's real high.
The one point eight that you're referencing, was that for the entire roof or just a portion of it to repair? And when was?
This was last year's capital by the DPW for the roof.
For the whole thing?
Oh, it says, it says roof.
Okay. Because I don't know, you know, and the MSBA sometimes has specific rules about what you can and can't do and all of that. So I don't know what the differences are in what the DPW projected versus that. I'm sure that the school can bring the, or provide ahead of time what the MSBA cited for the project as to how it arrived at that three million dollar cost.
Yeah, we need to know that we're talking apples for apples.
Exactly. That's a sizable difference. I don't think it's that big of a difference, but.
Do you feel the amount of reimbursement is a confirmed amount?
It is.
It is?
Oh, yeah. That's what, that was what was last week was.
That's what I was concerned about.
Oh, no, it's confirmed.
So regardless of whether it's lower, if it comes out lower, we still get funded to one point three?
It's a percentage. So it's always the percentage, and I don't know this one, if it's fifty-three or whatever. It reduces the whole amount.
Geez, I know it will reduce accordingly, but if it ends up costing more, are we going to, are they going to?
It won't cost more than the, than the three million that they gave.
Yeah, they're doing double what it was projected to be from the.
I think we have to be.
So is the one, the one-three was appropriated against the three?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what they're saying, they would be.
So the one-three is not going to grow. At best-case scenario, the cost of the roof comes down and the appropriated amount will decrease.
Correct, yeah. Which is what happened with the windows and doors. And it was a big difference.
Thing is, when they go out to bond, it's just increase the debt service. So on the reverse side, we have to make allowances for that. And I am most concerned of having a big increase on the tax rate. We certainly don't want to go from, what is it, twenty fifty-five to twenty-two fifty and impact, impact, you know, the average family, four or five hundred dollar increase.
Now, one thing that was mentioned at the last town council meeting, and I think it's worth repeating, is that the twenty nineteen tax rate is the twenty fifty-five, but that was a decrease from the twenty eighteen of twenty ninety-four. So the town council wound up reducing the budget significantly to leave more on the table, and then based on how everything fell out, it wound up being an even bigger reduction than what the town council was planning. So essentially, this year is like a two-year tax decrease.
Yeah, however, we don't have the new growth that we had last year.
No, no, and I'm not projecting a lot of new growth at all either.
I studied that, and I did confer with the director of the city, and she said it could only possibly be another fifty thousand, because we've enjoyed some substantial growths, but construction is down, so.
Well, that was discussed even with the governor of Western Mass as a whole, is exactly where you say it is.
Yeah.
My priority at this meeting is, I will agree with Chris, is it's the mill rate number.
Yeah.
So do you have a goal that you want to bring it either down by or down to? Because that might be helpful for me to give you some suggestions.
It's what we don't want it going up to.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, it was twenty ninety-four, you know, a reasonable increase in the tax rate, but not.
So what's a reasonable increase?
If we can keep it to just a dollar, we'd be happy.
So a dollar from current or a dollar from the twenty?
Dollar from current.
I would almost.
Is that what everyone here thinks?
It's a place to start, but.
Yeah, because if we were at twenty ninety-four in two thousand eighteen, yeah, I don't, I don't work it backwards usually, but.
I would want to look at what, what do we absolutely have to add to the tax rate? What's not under discussion?
Yeah.
And then build from there, not work it from the top down.
Exactly. I did have another question for Sarah before we let her go. I think Jim covered part of it. The contractual increases in the salary and the general government, they're all related to that new job study that was done? They are.
Right. So the job study was completed, and it did both the TEU, so the Town Employees Union, but it also did all of the management as well. And so then the increases that are in, that you see in the budget include all of the finalized contracts with all of the unions, because last year that, they were not all in there. And then any adjustments that were also made to any contractual employees as well.
Okay.
Based on the wage study.
Okay. All right, so if, say for, was anything negotiated with the contractual authorities? So say they, the job studies showed they deserved a twenty percent increase, is that going to be done in steps or is it being done all at once?
I think it depended on the position and just how underpaid they were, if they were underpaid. Because there were some people that it then came back saying that they are paid the top and that they're redlined. And then there are other people that it said that there was a significant difference or that the difference between, one of the big things from the wage study was that the difference between the staff level and the management level, there wasn't one.
Okay.
And so it's, to make that more of an apparent difference.
All right. And the salaries we see in here, in the proposed budget, include, lost my thought, include the proposed new employees as well? If the department requested another employee, so they are in there. So that's built in?
They are in there at whatever the estimated grade in step would be if they were a union or whatnot, and it includes what the union's rates would be at that time.
Okay.
And it does include the minimum wage that's currently in place, as well as the minimum wage that's in place at January one.
Yeah. I noticed that, I was there in attendance when the school superintendent and Mr. Frichero made their presentation and how they are trying to just kind of phase that in as, because they're still in discussion. So I think that's a good idea too.
Chris, just in terms of your question, so when it says contractual increases in these summaries, is that union contract increases plus whatever adjustments are being made to coincide with the recommendations of that wage study? Which has more, you have more flexible, the town has more flexibility in reaching the targets of the wage study versus actual contractual obligations, right?
Well, it depends, because as, so for instance, if you were a manager and your contract was about to expire, then as part of the wage study, it being looked at to then make the adjustment, now you've signed a new contract. So they are, all of the amounts in there are, they're assigned contracts for every single one.
All right, so I guess I'm not quite sure how much of that is the town's discretion in terms of how quickly to adjust based on the wage study and that part of the wage increases where there really is, you know, there is nothing because it's contractually obligated.
Oh, sure.
Is it easy to break out how much of that is more a discretionary purpose?
The discretionary purpose, so yes, I can answer that question. So if, so the union contracts do not, they have a set increase based on what had been negotiated. A contractual person such as a management level, they don't have a set increase. Their contracts all say a potential of up to a two percent increase based on performance is what all of their contracts say. So we instructed all of the contractual people to include up to two percent in there, and we made it very clear that does not mean that you are getting that, but that is the maximum amount to know in there. So yes, to the discretion there, it's supposed to be based on performance, but yes, the, there is discretion in that.
So there's no COLA in there, cost of living increases, just step and grade?
For the union, yes.
Yeah, okay.
You mentioned that the unions have all been negotiated now, or probably now have to, going to have to do that for a couple of years?
Depending on the union, yes.
Right. So they won't all fall in the same year again?
Correct, they are not supposed to all fall in the same year again.
What about the contractual, the management positions? Are we caught up on all those contracts? Have all those been negotiated?
No, I think, I don't know how many are left, off the top of my head. I can only think of one that's still open, that's currently expired, that they're working on to finalize, but I don't remember where everybody else stands.
So we don't know if there's going to be additional monies that are going to be contractually required that will be part of this, that are added to this?
We put the worst-case scenario for that, that one contract in particular, we put in the worst-case scenario.
Okay, so everything here is built in? And there's only that one that you're aware of?
I believe so, but I could double-check that, I don't know for sure.
Okay.
It's a lot of contracts.
Yeah, it's just don't want any surprises, you know? We get it all worked out, and then, oh, by the way, we had these three contracts which were just being negotiated.
Is there any?
Ooh, there are many, two, I could think of two.
Okay.
The more I'm thinking, I'll double-check and get back to you.
Is there any, how many people are currently in human resources? I know we don't have the director, we don't have the assistant director.
Right, and then there is, the benefits manager is in there as well. So there's three, and the town manager has been working with a company to outsource for a little while.
Okay. All right, that was my.
We will see that. We've asked Denise to include in part of our packages the overall org charts for the departments, and they have partially done that, but we were looking for names to be associated with those positions, so that's going to be coming soon.
Okay.
We asked for that in our last meeting.
I have some of the organizational charts, I'm not sure if I have them all.
Right, so we're looking for those additional org charts to come all at once in the same format that we selected, where we thought the DPW format was the best to use. That was a question that Denise asked of us, and we said we'd like that format. And then the names associated with those positions, so we'll have a full org chart with names so we can have a visual of what, how that aligns to the individual line codes here.
Right. Right, I think of that, what Jim brought up on the sources of revenue on page thirteen, I think that that four hundred and some odd thousand is like excess, excess capacity or excess that we don't, that we don't tax, but that seems like a small amount.
If I can too, Sarah, I'm sure you've been challenged by Denise to probably look at this already, but we need some creative ways to look at funding some of these larger items, whether it's straight bonding or if there's other options available, and I don't know that, because I know the bond rates have been increasing. And if we, if we, if the trend is to continue to increase and we don't bond for this year, are we going to pay double a bond, you know, increase for next year? I mean, you probably have, from our financial advisors that you talk with, some idea as to whether that's going to be, continue to go up. Again, I know it's all kind of speculation, but there's trending which is pretty common, and we can kind of follow that and use that as a, as a, a way to try to measure whether or not we need to do something this year, or does it make more sense to wait till next year if the bond rates are coming down?
Yeah.
And also some creative ways to do some of the bonding.
Yeah, and there may be ways, there may be a source of revenue, who knows, to reduce an amount to be bonded as well, take, you know, to reduce that so that the liability isn't as great and the debt service won't go up.
Right.
So, okay, that said, if we have no other further questions, I'll let Sarah get back to her office.
Great, thank you for sitting.
Thank you very much, Sarah, for making time for us. I know you have a busy schedule, a lot of questions.
So may I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
So when will be your next meeting?
We're, we were hoping we would have it Thursday afternoon at around two o'clock. I don't know if Jim can make it, can you make it at Thursday at two?
I have a four-thirty in the north end of Springfield, so I can be here for a good portion of it, but I may have to, I may have to skedaddle.
And Mike has an obligation as well, so it'd probably be one of our short meetings. I'd like to schedule something for Monday as well, either Monday.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, because the twenty-third is Tuesday.
Yes, yes, yeah. We're definitely operating under some severe time constraints in coming up with this.
Is Thursday, is that enough time to post it?
We've already called Tom, he's in the process.
I think it's forty-eight hours.
Yeah, so he's already posted it. We called him an hour ago.
So the questions that you asked and the information that you asked, I'll try to have it to you as, as quick as I can. So if it's Thursday at two-thirty, I'll try to have as much as I can for that. If not, then it will be Monday, you said?
Yeah, we'll be here for two.
Two.
The meeting is posted for two.
Two, sorry. I'll write that down.
When would we try to get the benefit of Denise's and Sarah's recommendations based on their analysis of the proposed, the proposed budgets?
I don't know if Sarah can do, give us an idea of that on Thursday.
I'll see if I can.
Okay.
Denise is out sick today, which is why she, she couldn't be here, but I will see, we're, then touch base tomorrow. And, you know, it's still in our working format, it's not in a pretty, anything.
If that were possible, I think that would be helpful, because that would leave us Monday to noodle on it and talk it through.
Yeah, because the council wants something from us on the twenty-third, so.
Right, right.
But Thursday meeting's posted.
And then you're thinking Monday, what?
What's good for everybody on Monday? I'm, I'm open on Monday. So do we want to do a morning meeting, afternoon?
For me, morning, anytime, probably ten, ten a.m. on would be okay.
Yeah, yeah.
How about you, Ray?
I would agree that, for those of you who don't know, I work in public safety, so my, my schedule is a moving target. And right now, Monday, Monday at ten o'clock is fine.
Okay, then, Jeannie?
Yep.
I'll leave that to you to post that.
I will try to get as much as I can for you.
Sarah, just aside too, before you leave, one of the things, it's, it's, it's something we've done in the past, but, and I'm sure it's being looked at in some way by some folks, but one of the ways that we can help reduce some of our additional costs on some of the capital projects is to look at the lease versus buy-in outright. It's a lease-to-purchase or just a plain lease with regards to equipment or some sort of mutual aid agreement where we have a piece of equipment we only use eight times during the course of a year, we can share the cost with a joining community if they use it eight times a year. Well, that's, that's a way to help reduce some of our costs and some of these expenses that show up on our capital funds, projects.
Did you have any particular items on the capital that you were thinking of for that, for this year?
Just in general, most of the DPW equipment comes to mind with some of the more specific equipment, like the mini excavator. We've leased that in the past, rented it on a need-to-need basis. I understand that our DPW superintendent would like to see that, piece of equipment come onto his vehicle list, but I mean, that's seventy, just under seventy-two thousand dollars. Again, times ten, if we have that many, you know, I mean, all those things add up.
Right, I believe that one was on the water and sewer enterprise, so that's not going to help our tax rate. But yes, it is still a good idea.
Yeah, but in general, that's just something, yeah. If we can, I mean, it's just a way of trying to take the burden off that appropriation of the monies for the taxes.
Just to elaborate on that, I spoke with other communities, and so everyone understands, if there was a piece of equipment that, let's say we needed for a minimum of a month, we figured that we could do. If, this, this work doesn't generally just pop up unless it's a water break. So if we schedule that work in town in conjunction with another town that has work, and you So if we schedule that work in town, in conjunction with another town that has work, and you can lease it during the same month, then you can drastically, you know, decrease obviously the cost to run that piece of equipment, and not maintain it twelve years, a year, and have it depreciate as well. So it's, it's a little bit of, yeah, mutual agreements with other communities, and they were receptive, the communities that I spoke with, in trying to accomplish that.
So, I do have a question, just playing the devil's advocate, okay? So if we were to, to lease a piece of equipment, and let's presume that it's a piece of equipment that's really not that far away to, to lease, right? We'd still have to send folks over to go get it, right?
No.
And how does all that work?
They deliver.
They deliver, so it's just doing all the arranging of it instead, so.
Scheduling, really, scheduling the jobs that they're going to be used for.
Yeah.
I will make sure that, that we relook at everything and see if there is any possibility, and if so, great, and if not, then a reason why we think it's not feasible.
It's, it's worth looking, yeah.
It is worth looking at.
It sounds like a possibility of a savings there.
Yeah, and, uh, and my last piece of it is, like, the IT department, I, I believe from one of the requests, they were looking at some sort of server redundancy. Uh, in the past, and I, I, I'm trying to pick my brain, but this is many years ago, when I was on capital, and we had a discussion about, uh, sharing that backup with another town, and I think it was handed, where we had some sort of redundancies, where they were storing our backup, we were storing theirs, so if we had a full failure, we could restore from their backups, and not have to, and not rely on, on ours, and, and vice versa, I believe. So, in some of these, in some of the IT requests, there were also those, and, and the reason I'm just mentioning these is, as part of yours and Denise's analysis of where to cut, these are things that I'm thinking of that are, are maybe possible candidates, and you guys are, are closer to it than, than I am, and, and would know more, and whether or not that's feasible.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks.
You have so much knowledge that we need.
I try.
Saves us a lot of time, right?
Yes, it does, yes, it does. We should've had her when we were on the appropriations committee, Tim.
We were, well, I can't enough to have her in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Or take a computer.
Yeah, good, she's got all set up her way.
Okay, we look forward to hearing from you with all that we asked for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I agree, it would be very nice to know what, um, the town manager and the finance director, uh, have targeted. I can't help but assume that they have, um, looked at some of the requests for new employees that may or may not be necessary at, at this juncture for the town. And, um, I'm wondering what you have for general thoughts on that, are you, would you wanna wait for that? What they're coming up with to further discuss this, because I went through, um, I saw, you know, I, I took the low hanging fruit. I generally put X's on the areas that I was questioning.
I have a question, I just wanna make sure that everybody read it the same way I did, I don't, I don't believe there was any funds created for an additional building inspector that would be classified as a, uh, doing, uh, zoning and code enforcement? And the only reason I thought of that position was because it essentially, um, has the capability of being able to cash flow itself.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't believe I, there's any, any, uh, anything in there under the building department.
Page seven, yeah.
I just wanted to see if you guys, your interpretation.
Yeah, and that shows a twenty-eight point nine percent increase on the salary level. At first, I thought they were talking building management, then when I saw it was for the building department.
I thought I saw something with, um...
It says department assistant on this sheet.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Positions, all the positions requested.
It says department assistant, and I'm not clear what that is.
Well, I believe that's clerical.
Yeah, that's clerical.
It would be from, it would be from...
Well, they already have a clerk.
I, I thought, um, it, there was already an, an individual that's in that position, Maureen Dubersky?
Yes.
I'm assuming she's still there?
Yes, she is.
I thought it was more for administrative duties rather than out in the field, that was my...
Probably, and the reason I brought out the field again was hoping it would cash flow itself. Because labor is our biggest enemy, the way, as, as I've gone through this.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, with, with benefits, that particular position would cost the town sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-one a year, so you're really...
Projected over fifty percent benefits to the salary, yeah?
You're really adding...
I'm sorry, Jim, the number, no, the number you recited for benefits?
Yeah, the, 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 kind of the cheat sheet that was provided, it, it was a...
I just wanted to see if it coincides with by number.
Well, the, the benefits amounted to over fifty percent of the, of the projected salary.
It was a forty-six, so we're close, yeah.
Yeah.
And that could, that could move a little bit sideways too, but, but it is, it's, it's, it's almost double what you, what, you know, the cost of the employee when you add the OPEC in.
Yeah.
And, and of course, it's, it's the gift that keeps on giving, because the seven and a half percent...
Year after year, after year?
Yeah.
It just keeps increasing, and it just, that runaway snowball.
Yeah. Yeah, there, um, my first question as I, as I looked at the request was, what's not being done now? It seems we have a pretty efficient group of employees where, um, and I know some of these are repeats from what I've heard, um, requests, I should make myself clear, but, um, I saw things, and this is really very, um, we're lucky for two thousand and twenty that we're not into the national elections, I guess, and the primaries and everything else, but that'll hit in two thousand twenty-one. The three new positions requested in IT, and, uh, which would be one full-time and two summer interns. Sound as though the summer, and I'm not sure they...
Full-time, but just for the summer, is the way I interpreted it.
Full-time temporary.
Yeah, um, the other position requested was in the police department, another full-time position. Uh, one in the building department, let me go back and start fresh. Uh, one in the town accountant's position, that was a full-time. Uh, the collector treasurer wants to take a part-time position and bring it to full-time. I would have, there are two full-time plus the town clerk in that office, like, or one?
Which department?
In the, the town clerk's, is it one?
It's Tom and myself and Mary.
And she's part-time?
She's full-time.
She's full-time, so you have, and you're full-time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so where does the, oh, I'm sorry, not your department, it's the collector treasurer, part-time to full-time. Three in IT, one in the town clerk's office.
Not a person.
Part-time. One in the fire department.
That would be to create a new position for a deputy chief, I believe?
Yes, yes.
How about a procurement officer?
That was in there for, for the collector treasurer and the county.
Yeah.
Did Chris, did you come across that one as of yet?
Four.
It's, um, page five, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, one for the police department.
For town accountant on page five.
Yes, yes, I did mention that, one full-time. Uh, that would be a procurement officer. Okay. I think I've mentioned the others, uh, one in the police, that would be a captain's position. And the building, it said administrative assistant. And education, three full-time positions, three teachers, um, when, did I?
Social and emotional.
Support, two of them.
Two of those in the town.
And then a, uh, in technology person. I think the technology person is to teach the teachers how to do the technology, um...
So, when we were, when we had an appropriations committee, we used to spend six, seven months going through the budget.
Yeah.
And having everybody come in and, and do their proposal, give them guidelines, so that they didn't just, you know, ask for the world.
Yeah.
So it, it's, it's kinda difficult to squish all that down to the, the timeframe here, that's why I'm suggesting, obviously, to rely a little bit on the recommendations that the town manager and, and the director of finance, at least get the benefit of their thinking, of ones at least to think twice about, and ones that they feel strongly are, are, are necessary, and then, you know, use judgment after that, but...
Yeah.
And we'll never get familiar enough to really be able to, at least, you, you have the benefit of, you've been listening to this through meetings and whatnot.
You can help too, to watch the Elcat tapes, where the department heads, you know, explained and answered questions at the time that were kind of detailed.
It is helpful, yeah.
And it's round two for us as well, we had the previous year. I mean, I, in fairness to you guys, yes, we've had, you know, I've been able to digest this, I, I look at it quarterly.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not playing catch-up in the end.
Yeah.
But it's more the information that I can extract, um, from the documents that Sarah's creating with the help of the town manager, and then using that information to make, um, fiscally, um, good, uh, decisions for the town going forward, so.
Yeah.
One thing, uh, just a thought, that since it's fifty-one percent and, and growing of our town budget, is maybe have, uh, individual representative from the school department here at our next meeting?
Yeah, I, perhaps that would be a good idea, because they mentioned at the, when they made the presentation to you folks, that they had seven retirees this year, but, uh, she said it would affect the budget only by a decrease of a hundred and thirty thousand. And I was a little confused about that, so it might be good, was she the business manager that was there? Yeah, perhaps she would be able to come.
Yeah, and with Sarah, between the two of them, they would be able to crunch numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, a question I would have right off the top would, would be, um, you know, if somebody's been in the system for approximately twenty years plus, and they're replacing that person starting at day one.
Lower salary.
Um, I would hope to be, uh, you know, a negative correlation, a substantial decrease in the amounts going out, so.
I agree.
Without giving up the teacher.
Okay. All right, um...
I guess that the, whether Pam is able to attend, I guess that would be up to Gordon, with, we would have to, or obviously you would have to invite him to the meeting.
And do that, see if he, you want him to come in on Thursday?
Yeah, Richard Fisher is the chair, Gordon is, uh, obviously the department head.
Yeah.
Superintendent of schools, and Pam is the business manager, I believe.
Might just wanna allocate a certain amount of time.
Yes, yes.
Um, the packet that Tom has down the hall, did you find it any different that we, the packet that we were given?
I didn't grab that packet, I used, 'cause I had already marked it online.
'Cause that's what I'm doing, I'm working off that information, those packets were, I think, designed for anyone that, um, you know, engaged in this committee that wasn't privy to the information that we've had.
I had the impression that a lot of it was, uh, 'cause I just picked it up, uh, was the handouts that, that were given to you all at the, at the council meeting.
Yeah, I would hope it would be, because we had asked...
There was some follow-up with the, like, the positions were elucidated a little bit more.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that we had made sure that we had asked for in early in the budget process is to help streamline things and make sure we're all talking from the same talking points and same documents, is anytime a new document is presented, other than what's been given to us, it's identified, clearly identified, and what it replaces.
Okay.
The changes.
The changes, yeah.
So, these two were, they look like follow-ups to some of the discussions that you had, in terms of clarifying where the increases in staff were coming from.
Yeah.
So the council, I got those.
And then the mill rate impact.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is what I, on this page, this is what I asked for, I mean, I just did some quick math, looking at a four million dollar increase, I said, in order to move that down a half a million dollars, you're gonna have to knock, you know, twenty, it's only gonna take twenty-five cents off the mill rate. Um, now that's been, I think, crunched to the four million probably equates to what, is it a dollar, dollar sixty, maybe?
It's, yeah, it's a dollar sixty, increase right now.
Yeah.
But, but that's without the two million that was just given to us over the weekend.
So in essence, if the four million went away...
One point nine three three, but, and still...
We'd be coming down a dollar sixty, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess when we put a pencil to it, the, the quick scenario for me kind of is, is what are we obligated right now? I mean, if we're twenty fifty-five, what don't we have any control over, and where's the tax rate going?
Yeah.
Without anything else, and then we, we have to decide on a team, where do we build it from there?
Yeah.
If any.
Is it, is it twenty fifty-five that we're at now?
Yeah.
I believe that's a very accurate number.
And the projection is twenty-two fifteen.
Without the school.
Right, without this other two million dollars that we just got, uh, jumped on a lap, so, I, I'm concerned.
I mean, if that project's deferred, how long is the, the grant or the one point three, how long does that sit on the table for?
Don't know, but...
I mean, that would be a question at our next meeting, where I'll have someone here from the school committee.
Exactly.
So.
I wondered too, if you could, you could get questions to them before the meeting, so they could be prepared, and that would, that would, you know, save some time.
Because we were talking about improvements to the high school, right, the high school roof?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this just, this just popped up over the weekend, right?
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't approached...
The electrical and the, and the roof were the two major issues at the high school.
Right.
Yeah.
And those are millions.
And then those containers.
I think we were on the committee when the, the, the high school roof was last done, right? We had to have an architectural's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long did it last?
About twenty-five years.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, dear, okay, well, I'll, I'll contact the school office and ask, I know it'll be short notice. Oh, they're not there this week, or maybe the business offices, yeah.
I don't wanna jump all over the place, but while, while it's on my list, um, how about any, um, ongoing litigation? Uh, because the legal's a big number here, or, or it certainly has a, a large increase, and I believe it has a large increase from a percentage standpoint.
Yes.
Based on trending, um, we, we were never able to cover our legal expenses with the amount allowed, allowed, so, um, attorneys might have an idea, it's, it's seeming we have an attorney, where, where are we in that phase of, um, settling? And, and are there any, what cases are left on the table that could affect?
I think Sarah would have some idea, she said they are getting the, the liability issues down, uh, because they inherited a lot from the previous administrations. So she seemed to indicate that, you know, that we have not had as many incidences that require litigation. And I, I would be a little leery of, not leery, but hesitant, I guess would be the proper word, to ask an attorney, what, what do you see, how kind of trouble we're gonna be in, you know?
Well, there's, there's pending, I would say we've cleaned up a mess behind us, but I don't know what on, ongoing litigation we might have from...
We don't know how many cases are, are still on the books.
Right now, on the books, and, so maybe that's a better way of phrasing it, what's on the books right now, because they're gonna surface at some point.
Chris, I was a little confused on the page thirteen, it's still, uh, on the FY nineteen budget.
Yeah.
If, if our revenue budget was sixty-one-three, and we had a surplus of two million, does that mean we didn't actually tax up to that forty-three?
No, we haven't gone to the limit yet.
That looks like it would be the, um, yeah, the excess capacity.
Yeah, we've never taxed. Yeah, we've never taxed to the...
So it's our ability, but we didn't, we never taxed that amount?
Right.
So this is just the...
Which I think is part of the scheme to keep the tax rate down.
So it's not really our budget per se, that's for FY nineteen?
No.
We didn't have a surplus of two million, all right. But the forty-four for FY twenty-twenty is taking us up to the full potential of the...
Yes.
So now we need the full potential in order to, in order to cover everything.
To our levy limit?
But when...
All, all except four hundred thousand, right?
But when you... But when you look at the, look at page thirteen, look at the last column, it kind of tells you where all the increases are. When you get a ten point eight five increase in the department, you know, departmental requests in general government, and then ten point two one, thirteen point three seven. That's, I, I'm a little disappointed that the departments were told zero percent increase on the expense portion of their budget and put in all the contractual increases. And of course, in a year where the job study was done as well, if, if someone was making forty thousand and they said it's supposed to be fifty thousand, rather than give them that ten thousand dollars in one year, could it have been negotiated and spread over two years? So it'd be less financial impact.
Right.
I can understand the employees' point of view because I've been there, but it, it's a lot to absorb if you have.
That's why it would be interesting to know how much of that is, is that kind of thing.
Exactly, exactly. And I was, you know, I was concerned over the weekend, are we going to have to cut back on some of the capital projects? And they've accepted those, but I, they haven't voted, you haven't voted.
No, we have not voted, no.
So.
They haven't been accepted. They've been discussed at, at one meeting and briefly discussed at another meeting.
Yeah.
And it's really up to us to go through them again.
Sure.
To come back with recommendations as, and I mean, I've, I've got a lot of ideas. I've been, I mentioned a few to Sarah.
Right, well, that, that's part of our charge, right?
Yeah.
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 I mean, I, Jim, you know, I was on Capitol for eight years.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that, and that was only a small portion of what you had to deal with on appropriations.
Right. I think the ma, the major issues that I recalled from that discussion that we had was probably police vehicles and the police station were two of the ones that.
Yeah.
There was a whole nother one about the paving.
Right, roads, right, roads from the Department of Public Works.
Right.
And if you talk about the police department, we were talking about a feasibility study. And if you're planning on making any repairs to the station, then the feasibility study needs to happen. And that, that could be, we could be reimbursed with that money from the governor, right?
Yeah, it's a possibility.
And then part two is, is vehicles. And one of the questions I asked was, you know, if we don't replace a vehicle this year, we could be, you know, looking at two the following year.
That's why I think they provided us an updated, because the vehicle schedule that we had hadn't actually included the, the vehicles that had been approved last year.
Yeah.
For, so hopefully that'll be a little clearer, but I guess we'll have to allocate a little time to.
Yeah.
Fortunately, yeah, and I've done a lot of homework on that subject, man, and I will bring those notes that are specific to vehicles, mileage, the condition. And I have photographs to go along with it.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay. Okay.
All credited and funded.
Subject two.
Subject to appropriations.
They'll pay for it, right?
Yeah, so I don't know how much more you'd like to do today, I, at your disposal. Do you want to actually?
I was just going to say, I may have some additional questions, but would I completely just forward them to you? And, and.
Through here.
Oh, no, I mean, I'm going to go through my, my.
Okay.
My little.
Packet.
Packet.
Yeah.
Based on what I heard here and what I've got, I might have some additional questions.
I've got a question for you, since you seem to indicate that there was a change to what we received already on the council, and that kind of troubles me, is that we were supposed to be notified when changes to documents were made. We received an auto fleet schedule from the DPW and the police department.
Let's get that too.
And.
No, I, I think that's all I'm referring to, Tom.
Oh, okay.
It, it was, I was watching the four-two hearing from LCAT, and I think that's where you had asked for it. And I, or, or that's might, might have been where they provided it.
So is that the same document you have?
Yeah. It's just the updated version.
Their packet is everything that you received, like, at the time of meeting department heads, and they just gave you all that paperwork, so that's.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's a change because we didn't have it when we were doing the capital, looking at the capital. It hadn't been updated.
The last time we, we had one of these was like four years ago, five years ago, maybe. But, so are you looking at four-two nineteen as a date?
Yes.
On the document, okay.
Yeah.
No, I'm not sure I have that, the police vehicles.
You should have that. It was one of those just single sheets.
I've got one from the DPW. I've got the DPW one.
DPW fleet is huge, and I asked for that as well.
Yeah.
As part of the council's request.
Yeah.
Through the council.
I think I have DPW, but I.
It should have been part of that. It was part of the package.
Yeah, this would be these police vehicles here.
Yeah, and, and those are identical. They're put together identically. They're sort of like a loose, they're like single sheets, like the tax rate thing was just single, the nine positions thing was just single. It wasn't included with the police, their packet, the state, their little thing.
It was with the building department. This is what it.
Yeah, I tried to break everything down by department.
Yeah, so maybe you filed it that way.
I might have filed it correctly.
DPW fleet, which is pretty.
Student fleet sheets.
Yeah, this is the one I have.
GPW and the police.
So that's, that's DPW, and then the, the other one is, is the police.
Yes, okay.
Just so we don't take your copies.
I don't, yeah.
I mean, I, I have these, yeah.
I just wanted to show her.
Just as a general piece of information, having served in that committee for many years and chaired it, the mindset of the capital was to try to limit the new vehicles being purchased from departments other than the police and fire.
Yeah.
And the reason for that was, we felt that public safety was always the first priority. If, if a DPW worker, well, if a police department employee, a, the police officer were, were breakdown on the way to a call, that's not a good thing. That's a life-threatening issue potentially. If a building inspector misses an appointment, shows up twenty minutes late because the car he was handed to, down to, broke down, you know, we don't want to see that, but you can get a ride.
Yeah.
The car gets towed. No one's harmed, except, you know, you're a little late for an appointment.
Right.
So I, I, for one, have never been a big proponent of providing vehicles to department heads that are brand new.
Yeah, and it.
There's plenty of opportunities to use.
From what I could tell, being part of the capital budget process, that philosophy is being adhered to. And, and so the, the departments are getting what you, I guess you'd call hand-me-downs. Still service, serviceable vehicles, but the new purchases.
Serviceable vehicles is a good term to use because we don't want to hand them something that's going to break down, but we rely on the police department, the chief and his, his point person on this, I think Sergeant Bruno, to, you know, make that decision and, and give us a reliable vehicle, but one that really doesn't have any value in the trade-in.
Right.
Some of that information, Tom is talking about myself, and Sergeant Bruno, and the chief from East Long Meadow, and other surrounding chiefs, and myself just came back from a convention three weeks ago, and we're, we're talking about how, how vehicles are operated, the life expectancy. And there's many components to that, and I won't waste your time with it now, but I will bring all that information, and I'm sure it'll be helpful in understanding.
Okay.
How things sort out.
Good. The more we know, the better.
Yeah.
Better decisions we make.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, generally, there was a, a philosophy in the past to grant the police two new vehicles a year. I don't know specifically. I haven't studied the, the police request, but I didn't hear anything other, any greater amount than that.
Well, what started about five years ago was the police requested two, the board of selectmen only appropriated one. So they started to fall behind in their two, two car replacements.
Yeah.
So, and then two years ago, I think it was, the first council, only purchased one. So they're starting to fall behind that two for two. If we continued with that trend, this would not have been an issue with three.
Yeah.
There's a special request as part of that third vehicle to make it a utility vehicle for the police to provide for other uses that they have a need for. And, I mean, I, I worked under that department and, and working for, for the board of health and the police department as the animal control officer for eight years.
Yeah.
I would, I spent a lot of time in that department. I saw what was going on, and I know the needs.
Yeah.
And I personally would be an advocate for those three vehicles, but with that said, we still have to reduce this budget six million dollars.
Yes, yes.
And that, that may be a small piece of it, but it's nonetheless a piece of it.
Yeah, I think we'll have a better idea when Sarah gets back to us with the bonding on that two million.
Right.
And, yes, and a little bit more information on the contractual obligations, and also their perusal of the budget and what they think. So I think our next meeting will be pretty productive.
Hopefully meaty.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then we can finalize on Monday. How does that sound?
Good. Would you like me to bring that information regarding the vehicles?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, I would. That'd be very helpful. So, all right, I'll move to a adjourn.
Certainly.
Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Chris.
Okay.